Howdy y'all and welcome to Political Us. Today, we have a very special interview with Joa McNally, who's running for Claremont Council, City Seat 1. We're gonna do a quick interview, give you guys a chance to meet her as a candidate, ask some hopefully specific questions that you'll like to hear. And other than that, Jo, welcome to Political Us.
Thank you so much, Chris, for having me. This is a great opportunity and I do not take it for granted. Anytime I can get in front of voters and introduce myself, who I am, why I'm running. So I thank you very much for having me on today.
Well, thank you for coming. You're my first interview, so hopefully it'll go well. For you anyways, it'll go well for you. If it goes bad for me, I could record it. Alright, so first question that we have for you is, why are you seeking for the city council?
Okay, so I'm gonna answer that question, but real quick, I just wanna give like a quick intro of who I am, so people kinda get to know who I am. So again, my name is Jo McNally. I am a, I'm seeking a position for a city council seat one, as we've just talked about. I'm also a doctoral student. I'm pursuing my doctoral degree in education with a specialty in curriculum and instruction. I also am a mental health professional. I have background in substance abuse counseling and behavioral therapy. I'm also an international bestselling and award-winning author of three children's books and a national curriculum. And I am running to inspire the next generation of young leaders. I'm 29 years old and I know what people will say about your age and try to use it as a deterrent to keep people from running. You know, you're too young, or you're too this and you're too that. Just different reasons why people will try to put limitations on you for you to run. And I wanna be that voice that lets people know that if you do the work, if you prepare, and you're qualified, then you should step up and you should run. And I also wanna send out the message that being youthful is not the same as being incompetent. It doesn't mean being inexperienced and it doesn't mean that, you know, we have to sit in the background and wait till we're older to run. I've always been in a position of leadership. I've always, just wanna always push the envelope and just be better, not just for myself, but to make around those people around me better. So I think that I'm in a unique position right now to A, inspire the next generation of young leaders, but to also diversify the city council. I think it's really, really important that we have council members that accurately represent our city. And from years in the past, and just historically, I can make history as the first black woman on city council, which is a big deal for me, which is a big deal for the city. And it's not even just about race, but also I can be the youngest person seated in office, the first Haitian-American woman seated in office. So there's a chance for us to make real history here in Claremont. But going back to the diversity on the council, when you come to making decisions about people, we need different people seated up there that have different range of race, religion, background, creed, and class, so that we're accurately representing and we're also making decisions to the best of everyone and not just to one demographic or just one group of people. So, you know, I really feel like my run signifies a lot for a lot of people. A lot of people see themselves represented in my story. A lot of people who seem like two, who are underdogs in real life, you know, are connected to me, because I'm the underdog in this race. So I just wanna inspire people and give people hope, you know?
Very good, yeah, no, I agree with you wholeheartedly. I think the diversity inside the council or government period is better for everybody.
Absolutely.
So what would you say your three top personality strengths are?
I would say, number one, I'm a people person. I love people. I love the science of getting down to people's level. So working as a mental health professional, you have to have a people skill if you're going to help people, right? And my background, especially in substance abuse counseling, you have to have a heart for people. Empathy is a big deal. And I think that if we can bring those kind of skills back to the council, then we can bring back integrity, we can bring back humanity back into politics. We talked about this a little bit earlier, how we, you know, politics has become something that's, you know, it's scary almost, you know, when people wanna believe their side so much. I talk about this a lot. You know, it's one thing to believe what you believe, but at the rate that we're going, where people are so passionate about their beliefs, that they have no tolerance for people. I wanna come back into the council and bring that back, bring that compassion back, bring that humanity back, bring that empathy back. So I'll tell you, when I worked as a substance abuse counselor, the one thing that I noticed with substance abusers is that drugs and addiction have no discrimination. I worked with elderly people, I worked with young people, I worked with black people, I've worked with white people, Hispanic people, males, females. It doesn't matter, because it doesn't discriminate. But I will tell you interestingly enough, the most humanity I've seen was also in that group of people, because what's happened is that there's brokenness. And so people are really looking for grace and looking for healing and looking for compassion. And so it's beyond just policy. This is why I say that my politics is about people. Yes, we need policy, but we can't place policy above people. And I think that's what's happening, which we have a, we have a moral issue and we're trying to fix it a lot of times with policy. And really, we need to get down to the humanity issue and get back to that, you know, social factor. And then really just putting people first, so that we can, we can heal humanity. That's something that I keep saying. That's something I actually wanna start as a brand, Heal Humanity. I'll say also, I'm a great collaborator. I know how to make connections with people. Community over competition is a mantra that I swear by, because, you know, there's a quote that says, "If you wanna go fast, go alone, but if you wanna go far, go together." And so what, how can we collaborate? How can we put our resources together to make sure that we're benefiting the people of Claremont? One of the city's top issues right now is that there's a breakdown in communication and transparency between the city and the county. So a lot of communication or miscommunication is happening, because there's a lack of collaboration and community there. So when I say community, I always say that community is an action verb. It's something that you do. We should do community. And so it begs the question, how have we been doing community before in the past, where the city and the county are not working together to accurately give the resources that the residents need of Lake County to thrive? And so my, my work as an international bestselling author, it survives on collaboration, being able to partner with different people and in places that people don't really think of. When you think about books, you think about them being in libraries and in schools and in classrooms. But I go beyond that. I have collaborations in children's stores. I have collaborations in museums and art galleries. So always pushing beyond the envelope and stepping outside of the box, too. So I think that I come with creativity. I come with, again, that sense of people and being able to relate to anyone, I think is gonna be a key for the city as well. And I'd also say that I'm a great listener. I'm a great listener and a great teacher on top of that. So I educate for a living. My degree is in education. But again, with that mental health piece, actively listen, not just listening, but actively listening to what people have to say. And also just involving the public and letting them be a part of what's going on and not really making decisions for them, but making decisions in advocacy of them.
Okay, yeah, I, no complaints for me. I'm right there with you. So let's move a little bit to your campaign and then we'll move into the city a little bit. So a lot of, a lot of your campaign, and you've said it a little bit here today, you know, talks about, you know, youthfulness and diversity. You mentioned being the first, you know, black council member for Claremont if you're elected. A lot of times when people vote, they're looking for someone who sees, they see themselves in who they're voting for.
Yeah, absolutely.
If someone views this video or sees you as a candidate, how do you move past them not seeing themselves in you? How do you start that conversation?
Well, that's such an excellent question, Chris. And honestly, I start that question as people. See, I think that there's so many things that separate us and so many things that, you know, we can disagree with. What's the common ground that we can agree on, right? I use this a lot. Married couples, for example. I don't know if you're married, Chris, but are you married?
I am happily married.
Happily married, that's what I love to hear. He's happily married.
Might see this, so happily married.
Chris is happily married. So let me ask you, Chris, do you and your wife agree all the time on what you should eat?
We, no, every, that is, that is my least favorite question of every single day, is honey, what's for dinner?
What is for dinner, right? You guys don't agree that you should eat the same things, but you guys agree that you should eat, right? So what's the common ground? You don't have, you might, I might want pizza, you might want pasta, but we can still agree that we're hungry. And so I take that same approach with politics. We might not agree on every policy. And I'm not going to, there's no point in time, myself or any other candidate is gonna make a decision that's gonna please everyone. See, but, but my thing is do harm to no one, right? That's, that's another thing, as a mental health professional, we take oaths to do no harm. So if you can't at least benefit someone, then you don't wanna harm people. And with that question, when people wanna see myself, so the elderly population, for example, they might hear this and think, and get scared, you know, saying that, you know, youth now wanna pop up, do you wanna get? I wanna speak to that fear, that the youth coming in, it does not mean that we have to get rid of the elderly. We do not have to get rid of the elderly at all. In fact, I think that we would harm ourselves. I think that any nation, if you look through any time in point in history, when you remove elderly people from a community, you remove wisdom, you remove experience, you remove a lot of things that we can benefit from, because they've been here before. So they know about the past. And, you know, if they say, if you don't, if you don't know your past, then you're likely to repeat, you know, those same things. And so we need elderly people for advice. We need elderly people for that experience. We need elderly people to push us and guide us into different spaces. So we definitely don't wanna get rid of the elderly population. What we're saying is, we wanna prepare the next generation of young leaders to actually be prepared to lead. We actually have to train the next people to get up. We're not gonna be, none of us are gonna be alive forever. So who are we passing down, you know, the baton to, to lead? And so we have to be able to create that kind of leadership now. And it starts with the young people. We hear the song all the time, "Children are the future." If so, if we really believe that, how much resources are we putting into that, right? What are we doing to actually make sure that they're coming up and they're able to actually lead? So for anybody who's watching, when I say that, you know, we need young leadership, please don't take that to mean that we don't want elderly people to live here. Claremont can be a city for everyone. It does not have to be one or the other. It doesn't have to be a city for elderly people and it doesn't have to be a city for young. It can be a city that everyone can benefit from and everyone can really contribute to as well. So I don't wanna get rid of elderly people. I love elderly people, actually.
Well, so you kinda mentioned a little bit about the elderly vote and I'm gonna, I'm gonna quickly address the elephant in the room. And I think it's something that, you know, as a, as a person of color who's running for office, as a person of color who's, you know, running a political channel, you know, let's talk the elephant in the room for just a second and we'll jump to the actual city of Claremont. So what do you see a voter, what do you say to a voter who sees racial tensions spreading across America and fear that it's gonna make its way into Claremont?
Well, Chris, I think that's why leadership matters. That's why it matters who you elect in office, right? So part of leadership is being able to address those concerns or to assuage people's fears. I think that a lot of times, we don't ask the right questions, right? So I don't think that, I don't think, I do this for a living, so I have racial conversations for a living. My books, my first two books are social justice books. And so it talks about racial tensions in America. But what I've, I've done is, I've been able to create resources and tools that allow for people to have healthy discussions, allow people to have intelligent discussions around difficult topics, around uncomfortable topics. So when you talk about racial tension, for example, the solution for that is not to pretend that it's not happening. The solution for that is not to pretend that it's not going on or that we're like this perfect racial utopia, right? We need to actually point out those things that are still, that still need progress. We actually need to sit down and talk amongst ourselves, talk as family members, talk as neighbors, talk as community partners about these things, so that we get to actually a resolve. So a lot of times, people feel like if they just ignore it, then it's not happening. But really, what that's doing is just putting a Band-Aid over the bleeding. And so we need to, at some point, America, face what's really going on here and hear from people, right? I say this all the time, you can't assume that because something's not happening to you, that it's not happening at all, right? We need to be able to, again, get back to that act of listening. This is what I'm talking about when we go back to humanity and go back to compassion and go back to empathy, right? Then we can actually hear people. And when we can hear people, we can come to solutions. So I would ask those people that are afraid that the racial tension would come to Claremont, what are they actually afraid of? I don't really think that people are afraid of the racial talk. What are they afraid of? What are they really actually afraid of? Because fears actually will tell you a lot of information. So I wanna hear from these people. What are you afraid of? What are you afraid might happen if we? And I'm not gonna assume what their fear is gonna be. I'm gonna have that community, that conversation with people and allow people for me to tell them myself. And then when you hear from people, then you're able to actually speak to that fear and give them resources. Or actually, so a lot of times, it's misinformation or stereotypes, you know? You know all about that. So I can speak to that when we have intelligent conversation. So I would say that's why leadership matters. You don't want a leader, too, who's also gonna cower or hide or, you know, just, just around difficult conversations. You need someone who's going to be there and who's going to be a voice and is going to lead in times of challenge and in crisis. So it absolutely matters.
No, I agree, the part about the conversation, that's one of the reasons this whole channel exists, is to just try to have some of the conversation.
Absolutely.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, did you have more?
I was, I was gonna say, there's a quote by Albert Einstein that says, "Creativity is intelligence having fun." And so, Chris, what you're doing here with your channel, allowing, you know, taking those political conversations and breaking it down to a level where anyone can understand whether they have a political background or not, that's, that's you using your intelligence in a creative sense to get people to understand information. It's the same thing when I do with my books. I take, you know, my doctoral studies, in a sense, and break it down into a children's level, where they can be having intelligent conversations. So we need more creativity. We need more people doing this in the community. In different, you have media, I have books, someone else may have songs, someone else may have dance. Whatever it is, we need to collectively, collectively put it together, so that we're disseminating information, so everyone is having these conversations.
Agreed. Alright, so now we're gonna, we'll kinda shift the conversation back to the actual city of Claremont and start to focus in on a little bit of those. So if you're elected, you have the possibility of running into two very unique possibilities for the city council. One is that a city council full of seasoned veterans. A couple candidates that are either A, running for reelection. I know we have a couple candidates that are running to run again in the city council, so they will have been there before. And then on the other spectrum, there's a possibility that is almost an entirely new city council. I think with one member being there a year and then everyone else will be new based off this election. How do you think you'll approach those two different scenarios?
Well, again, I think that, okay, so if it's, if I come into council and I am, I'm the new member in amongst experienced council, I do believe that, again, I'm qualified and I'm credentialed enough to actually participate and actually bring up ideas as to how we can progress Claremont forward to the benefit of everyone. I think that people respect authenticity. I think that people respect people who have plans and not just will talk. So anyone who knows me will know that I'm a doer. I am not a talker. I'm a solution-oriented person. If there's a, if there's a problem, I wanna discuss. I wanna get with the stakeholders. I wanna get to, I wanna see what can we do. So I'm not, I would be an active participant amongst the sea of seasoned experience, seasoned and experienced council members. I can tell you that I wouldn't just be their idol tooling my thumbs. I believe that I'm experienced, I'm qualified, and I'm ready to, to lead. So I have ideas. If I were elected tomorrow, I have ideas that I can begin tomorrow as to how we can progress Claremont forward. Now, if it's completely the opposite way, where it is an overhaul, like you said, and now it's all new council members and one experience, I think the way that I would do that is the way that I lead my life anyway, in a professional sense, in my professional life, in my career, in my education. You know, I do everything, I do it excellently. I take that very seriously. Whenever that I'm engaged in something, I wanna do it well. I want, if I'm gonna put my stamp of approval on it, I wanna do it to the best of my ability and to the best of the residents here at Claremont. That's really the most important thing, is how am I representing the people of Claremont? So I have no problem, again, reaching out across the table and asking for help. I would even reach, if I were to win this election, I'd have no problem reaching out to my contender, who I'm going against right now, who has been seated since 2012, to ask him for help. He's been seated since, for eight years. He may have things that I need to know about. And so I'd have no problem reaching out, because if this is truly about benefiting, benefiting people, then it isn't about ego. So I have no problem reaching out to, you know, older council members, you know, seasoned, whoever, the county commissioners, whoever I have to reach out to, to collaborate, so that we can really progress Claremont forward. I'd also say that I believe in treating people with respect. So respect on the council is a big deal for me. Bringing that back to people and so that people are not intimidated at city council meetings, are able to express themselves freely. That's important. And so, yeah, I'm just, I'm willing to really just sit down with people and I'm not, I'm not gonna pretend that I'm an expert at every topic. I'm not, and where I'm not, you know, seasoned on, I will look to people who know more than, more than I do. And it also begs for us, as the new city council members, to study to show ourselves approved, beginning with the master plan for Claremont, understanding that thoroughly and seeing the progression of what has come from that and also wondering, what can we do to improve those things? So it still calls for more education on our part. And I am a student already, so education is my thing. So I don't mind learning and sitting down and really going through and just becoming better for our, for our residents.
Very good. So speaking of the, the master plan and how do we improve it? One of the things that I enjoy living in Claremont is when we talk about the nature and the beauty and the paths and the lakes. And a lot of times, that often tends to be a pretty big selling point for politicians around here. But all full disclosure, my family very rarely uses a lot of that stuff. We are not the outdoorsy family. And typically, what happens is, on the weekends or when we have spare time, we're leaving Claremont, or even the county for that matter, and spending our money elsewhere. This is something, I've actually heard this basically since I moved here, that Claremont is nice for lakes and for running and for exercise, but if you spend money, you end up leaving the city. So after you're elected to council, how do you address that issue? How do you address the issue of people leaving the city and the county to spend their money elsewhere?
Chris, that's such an excellent question. And I'm really so glad that you took this moment to be so transparent, because I think that it is a problem that we have to address, because Claremont is so beautiful. So I'm from New York City originally, but I've been down in Claremont since 2005. So I've seen all the changes that, you know, has taken place here in the city. And I also see what else can be done to improve the city. Now, I will say, I'm being from New York, as a New Yorker, if, the one thing we know how to do, Chris, is we know how to set ambiance. People fly to New York and flock to New York, because New York knows how to attract people, knows how to bring people to visit it and keep coming. So that's one of the things that I bring uniquely to Claremont and that I can bring to the council. I know downtown has so much potential, has so, so much potential to be so great and so inviting. And I think there's just certain pieces that are not put in place that I can see, especially with fresh eyes and also just being that youthfulness that I'm talking about. There's so many things that I can bring off the top of my head that would drastically change the way that people are interacting downtown and how they're spending their money and spending their time. The other thing that I've noticed, too, is, and I started doing this during my campaign, is I've started a Patron Your Local Small Businesses Challenge, where I patron different local small businesses, restaurants, different things of the sort. It might be a hair store, it might be an appliance store, but something local and I visit it and then I leave reviews on it so that, and do a video on it, so that people know about what's going on. I think a lot of times, too, people really don't know about what's happening in the city. And so if we can shine a light on, okay, well, you know, Chris does Public US over here and, you know, leave a review on that or this person has this restaurant here, or this person has this service here, then, and, and we disseminate that information, then people can really know about what's, what's going on in Claremont, right? So I think it's A, again, I think it's about that diversity in, in council again. Who can bring what to the area and who is it reaching? Who is it touching? And also, again, setting that ambiance, setting that tone, making people wanna come here and stay here, leave their money here. There's so many things that can be done, like off the top of my head. Like, I mean, five, easily five things that I can do that can attract people like right now. So I'm excited. If I, if I were elected, I've spoken to the city manager about some of the things that I've talked about. He's, he's excited. I know that he's leaving now and we're regretful about that. But it's just so many things that we can do to improve the city and keep our money here. You know, no reason why Winter Garden in Orlando is taking all our money. We have a beautiful spot, too, and we can really make this place a place that Orlando and Winter Garden will be coming over here to spend their money. So, you know, I definitely wanna be a part of that and, and help Claremont grow in that way.
Okay. Alright, we're gonna, we're gonna move over to schools and education for a minute, so maybe in the jailhouse. Obviously, the effects of COVID have made the school year a little bit of a problem for a lot of parents, whether it's making choices on how they're gonna send their kids to school or making choices on how they're gonna deal with at-home parenting. You mentioned on your website, reaching out to the Board of Education and working with them. So COVID is still gonna be around for a little bit until we get cured. So we're still stuck in this world. How are you gonna work with the school board, basically immediately, to make sure the second half of the school year isn't as kind of a mess as much as the first half was? And to be, be very clear, that is not at teachers, that is not at administrators inside the school.
That's the school board.
Or the school board direction.
Yeah, absolutely. This goes, Chris, back to the collaborative piece, right? How are you able to deal with people? How are you able to compromise with people? Who do you know and who are seated in places? So again, it goes back to the leadership, too. This, this election as well, we're voting on to people for, for school board, who I have connections with already. You know, so it's pretty easy for me to have that conversation. What I will say about the COVID thing, especially with the school board, is that those who plan to fail, or those who fail to plan, they plan to fail. And I think that's what's happened here, is that we have not considered integrated teaching until COVID happened. And so it forced our hands to start, you know, just scattering to figure out something. And we saw how that worked. It was ineffective. I have 15 nieces and nephews. My sister has four children. And one of the things that I noticed immediately is that there weren't enough resources for them to actually do their work. So they were attending schools, but they were only given one computer for each family. Well, that's not very effective, because they have school class at the same time. So where one person was doing homework, they'd have to wait for that person to do their lessons and their homework and then they'd have to finish. So now, parents are sitting there doing homework all day. Now, you can imagine the frustration and the mental health. I think that's another piece, too, because that homework and that school board doesn't just affect the child's ability to, to complete school, but it also affects parents' schedules. It also affects mental health, right? So the, when, when the school board doesn't properly plan to give adequate resources or to have a curriculum and instruction, which I have specialty in, to, that's designed to cater to students, A, who are homeschooled or who, this is really forcing our hands to be able to think outside the box. If COVID-19 hasn't done anything else, it has forced us to think outside of the box, how we do business, how we do family, how we do work. So it's gonna require for us, again, that creativity piece, I keep, it keeps coming up, because it is gonna require for us to do something new. We can't return to business as usual, because now, you know what I mean? Everyone's kind of worried about where is COVID gonna go next or if another pandemic is gonna happen, because no one could have thought of this before. So now we have to actually plan. So now we have to actually plan. In case of a pandemic like this again, how can schools set up instruction? How can schools set up curriculum that is designed to, uh, still be effective whether students are in the classroom or at home in front of a computer, right? Um, I have ideas about that. I already do that for a living. I create curriculum and instruction for a living. So having those conversations with the school board is fairly easy because I come with solutions, not more problems, but I come with ideas and solutions, how to improve this already. So I think for me to be fairly easily to, fairly easy for me to have these conversations.
Very good. Um, so we'll kind of shift ahead a little bit here. So looking at your website, uh, and if someone wants to learn more about you, obviously they can go to your website or Facebook, uh, you know, everybody's got it kind of everything. But as someone who actually dives into the candidates and tries to review them and look at, you know, look at them thoroughly, I want to let you know, I was actually very impressed with your website, very impressed with how open you were. So my, my ultimate question though, is that doesn't work all the time for all the candidates? That doesn't work all the way for, you know, city council meetings and, and other things? How would you look to inject some of what you've already done with your own campaign into the city council?
Well, I think that's, that's what it, exactly what it is, Chris. I think that if you've ever been to a city council meeting in Claremont, and this, again, this is not to be disrespectful, this is not to shine a bad, bad light on anyone. But, um, as a, as a young person, I also speak to young people. Um, a lot of the feedback that I get from the community is that it's boring. You know, it, politics is boring. The way that the council meetings are held, they're boring. People don't want to come out because it's boring, you know? I don't think that politics has to be so boring. And, um, thank you for so much for that compliment on my website, but when we weren't building it, that's one of the things that I wanted to, um, stand out immediately. And I'm so glad that you caught that. So that means, so, so, so that's just confirmation that people are getting that feedback. But I wanted it to be very interactive. I wanted it to be colorful. I wanted it to be inviting. I didn't want to just create something that just said Joe is running and that's that. I wanted people to actually be engaged and I want to bring that same approach to the council. How can we engage people to come to city council meetings? It's the same people, I go to council meetings every, every second and fourth Tuesday, it's the same people over and over again. It's the same topics over and over again. They delineate over the same way over and over again. So there's just like, it's just mundane, it's monotonous and people are, you know, don't want to come out. That, you know, don't, so we have to be able to address that. Well, how do we get people, more people engaged? I'd love to see a city council meeting that actually represents the diversity that we have in Claremont. I drew, I live to see that. I dream of the day that council, um, city council meetings will have black, will have Muslim, will have white, will have young, will have old, will have female, will have male, Republicans, Democrats, whoever, you know? We can have really a community, again, that community word being an action word, something you do, right? We need to do community a little bit differently so that we're getting newcomers to come out and voice their opinions and voice their concerns and act, and become active participants in their own lives. Um, I started that during my campaign called Take the Pledge. And Take the Pledge for me was all about getting newcomers to come to the city council meetings who haven't come out before. And it was, it's been a huge success. A lot of young people who, who've never come to the city council meetings before have continuously come with me now every second and fourth Tuesday and they're getting a sense of what's happening in the council and they're saying, oh, well, you know, we, they want to participate now and they're inviting their friends now. So that's the thing, we, we need to invite people that's going to invite people. Word of mouth is a big deal. And so, um, again, just changing that energy in the city and I think that has to do with the leadership. Once we do that, then we can attract different people, which will, I think, impact the question that you're asking here, um, you know, that creativity and, and then being engaged.
I, I agree. I know there's, I, I've found some, uh, excuse me, I've found some places that are live streaming the council meetings that help.
Yeah.
Um, just being able to watch it from home and just kind of have a general idea.
And you know, I'm so glad you brought that up because I did bring that before the council about maybe three weeks ago. I did say, the city has to be a little more transparent with how we are, um, you know, sharing information. Now I know, people know that, that city council meetings are second and fourth Tuesday of every month, but then let's talk about the elderly people who can't leave their homes. Let's talk about displaced people. Let's talk about, you know, people who have pre-existing conditions and things like that who maybe want to participate but can't get there. I think it's unfair that they don't have a live streaming coming directly from the city so that people are getting the information. And when I proposed this before council, what I, what I was told was that there are third party people who, um, record the, the, the sessions and share it live. And that's great, that's okay, but I don't think that, um, the city should allow the third party people to speak directly for them. I think that it should come directly from the city so that there's no misconceptions, that there's no manipulation, people are not interpreting their own words and interpreting their own ideas, but that they're getting the information directly from the city to home. Um, I think it's very, very important. That's something that I'm going to keep pushing for. I've seen other counties do it, I've seen other cities do it. They live stream the, the city council meetings. Uh, I think there's no reason why we can't be that transparent and do the same for our residents.
I would agree. If COVID-19 has taught us anything, it's that we know how to do videos now.
And, and if you don't know, you better learn.
That's right. We've learned how to do that. So last question from me anyways. Um, as you've started campaigning, excuse me, so as you started campaigning, um, and had the chance to get out there and meet voters, are there any issues that you've had to reprioritize based on what you're hearing from voters here in Claremont?
Um, there, there aren't any issues that I've put out there that I needed pre- prioritize because even before running, I was already in the community, speaking to people and seeing what is the issues that they want to see? What is important to people that they want to see? See, like I take my job very seriously. Whenever it's just, you're, whenever you're stepping into a leadership role, it is very important for you to get down to who are, who are, who is going to be under you and what do they want? Leadership is not about imposing your own will on people. You know, contrary to popular belief, council members, um, you know, state officials, government officials, they're not, um, elected to impose their will on you and what they want to see. Uh, we are elected to really be an advocate and a voice to represent what the people already want. So I had already been going around the community and, uh, and listening to those ideas. What is it that the people want?